August 20th, 2016. If you all would be here tonight. If everyone would please stand and throw in our invocation of blood. Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you for this day and for all that you've done towards you. We thank you for the opportunity to come here to discuss some business to help move our community forward. Lord, we are so grateful for all that you have done, all that you are doing, all that you will do to, to help us. Lord, we pray that you would give us guidance, direction, and that it will be done and that, again, our city will move forward. All these things, we pray in Jesus' name.
Amen.
We will renew the proclamation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Mayor Linder.
Here.
Councilmember Greb.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Manning.
Here.
Councilmember Stole.
Here.
City manager Miller.
Here.
City attorney Moore.
I trust that everyone has had opportunity to review the items in the consent agenda. There will be the minutes for the August 11th public hearing for the budget, the August 11th agenda work session, as well as the August 11th regular council meeting. We will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion to approve and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Greb.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stole.
Yes.
Mayor Linder.
Yes. Right, at this time, we have a special item that is not on the agenda, but I want to work it in right here if we can. That would be the, gee, if you'll go forward, we've got a couple of gentlemen that we would like to bring on to the, our list.
Yes, sir, Mayor. It's my privilege and honor to introduce two of the new officers that came aboard Monday. Adam Rose, a certified officer, coming from Athens, Tennessee, coming down to join our force. Edward Schneider, coming from the state of Florida with his family to our area, a certified officer from the state of Florida, coming to join our force as well. Mr. Schneider will have to go through a state mandated three-week transition academy, but I believe he can make it very well. Mary Phoebe Wood, I'd like to get you to measure both in the heart of the office.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Rose, you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. On my honor, I, Adam Rose, will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always uphold the Constitution and the community I serve, so help me God. Thank you, sir. Congratulations. Okay, Mr. Schneider, you will raise your right hand and repeat after me, sir. On my honor, I, Edward Schneider, will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always uphold the Constitution and the community I serve, so help me God. At this time, we will entertain communication from citizens. Have we had anyone sign in? If you are a resident of the city of East Ridge or a business owner here in the city and you have a comment, question, or concern you'd like to bring to the council, this would be your opportunity. If you will state your name and address for the record, you'll have five minutes.
Tinwood, 1519 Easter Avenue.
You make sure that the buttons are square at the bottom. Tinwood, 1519 Easter Avenue. Kind of hears the lot back behind here. If anything's going to be done with that, the reason I'm asking, at one point, you know, before Walmart showed up, we were going to put a park over there, basketball courts and stuff like that. Well, I know we've got the pioneer park here for the smaller kids. The older children have nothing to do. I'm 13 and up, and this is to 12 years old. I've got twin grandsons that are 14. They come home and complain they have nothing to do. Personally, I don't see that it would be that expensive or that much trouble to maybe put some basketball courts over there for the older kids, maybe volleyball courts and stuff for the older kids to do, you know, other than just run the roads and flower and have nothing to do. Now, this, like I said, we've got the park over here for the smaller kids, but the big kids can't go over there. Mr. Mayor, you talked about adding some recreational facilities.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the ideas I have talked to others about, possibly tennis courts, basketball courts. We are undertaking a recreation comprehensive plan at this present time, and I want to see what that comes back with first and what are strengths and where our weaknesses are. But I do know that we've got land over here. It's a central part of the city. We need to start looking at recreational amenities in the central part as well as the west side of the city. So that is something that we're working on right now. It's not budgeted in this year's budget, but hopefully I'll have some for next year's budget to put in.
Okay, so basically just sit and wait?
Our budget's already been adopted for the period until June 30th, 2017. I don't have a capital cost on that, so that would be something that we'd have to bring an architect in or at least an engineer to take work in. I'd have to reconstruct it.
Worth a try, anyway.
Third agent, can you come and pick the body over there and do the king's button?
Twelve nine.
That's correct.
Look at that. Hey, so the, what are the hours for the community center?
It's closed on Friday night. Most of the time during the summer, our hours run till around six or seven, and then they're a little bit late, you know, in the winter. We change them up a little bit different. They're later in the winter because we've got so much more stuff going on over at the community center. I know that City Manager and I also had talked about a skate park, you know, that's, we talked about that being a possibility as well. All this stuff, we want to do every bit of this stuff, and as soon as they get back with that study and... Ms. Miller, do you know when they're going to start, when we're actually going to start that study?
It's going to start in November.
In November? And just as soon as they get back with the study, believe me, that this gentleman and me both are really excited about moving forward and doing something not at Camp Jordan, something down here.
And get that money appropriated into the, in the next year's fiscal budget?
Yes, sir.
And my nephews, they're grown up now, so they don't, don't get out and have need for playgrounds or whatnot anymore, but I know they used to spend quite a bit of time over here at the community center playing basketball. So there are some things here, but certainly we would like to expand the offerings.
For $20, you can join the, the community center for all year. That means you get it, when you get out of school, you can come down and shoot until you can't shoot anymore. There's all kinds of things as far as that goes that you can do for $20 a year. And I don't think there's nobody that has a... And we have Coach Jimmy Starlin over there most of the time in the afternoon with him. Then we have Sid, who actually works with him and makes him better basketball players. And everybody might not, his kids might not be basketball players. I'm just saying that it is available.
Right, right. And it is, and it's certainly a fair point. We need more. We do have, have some offerings and...
He makes a great point.
Does Jim open every Monday through Friday for basketball?
At some point in time during the day, unless we've got, you know, unless we've got a 9/11 deal or something like that in there.
How about the, say, about the rubbish place where we're on Tuesday nights? That's in the gym size?
Well, we always share that with them over there. Like Wednesday night, the men come in and play basketball on Wednesday night, but then you start practicing basketball when it's basketball season after that. That...
Basketball season, then the children that's paying for $20 a year are not allowed in or because it's due to the basketball league's use?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's definitely correct. You can't pay $20 and get 24-hour use out of the, out of the community center.
Twenty, $20 a year becoming a playoff basketball, you want to play next year.
Well, I believe that.
And obviously, you know, we could debate for a long time, but, you know, do we need additional recreational facilities? I believe, yes. Do we, do we have a complete lack of recreational facilities? No. The truth is somewhere in the middle.
I think we're also looking maybe at the tennis courts up at the high school.
Yes.
We're supposed to get to Mr. Taylor. He wants to talk to you about the...
Yeah, we've had some, we've had some discussions on it.
Okay. Do we have another citizen who would like to bring a comment, question, or concern to the council? See none. We will look to communication for council members. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything?
Nothing right now.
Okay. Mr. Stole. Mr. Cagle. Mr. Redd.
The only thing I would like to mention is Mr. Clarkson, the tenant, he is way down on the list, and his will be bringing, his will be a pretty simple issue with which we can move him up to the front.
Yes.
All right, take care of that.
Yes, yes, absolutely, I agree with you. We'll do that. Anything else?
But he does a lot for you.
We won't subject you to that. All right, well, I've got a couple of things I would like to mention. One, I appreciate everyone who, who helped create the event, who helped pull off the event, whether it's, you know, planning, advertising, whatever. The 95th birthday celebration, I think, was a, was a resounding success. I think approximately over the course of the five-hour, six-hour block, there were about 2,000 people who drifted through. And at the time, I think the estimate was about 1,200 at the time, Frederick Railroad actually took the stage. There were 1200 chairs on the floor. Most of those were filled, and there was some lean over into the bleachers, so it was, it was a good turnout. I know fireworks were great. It was a, it was a very nice event. And so I just appreciate everyone who had a hand in that and everyone who came out to take part. Also wanted to say thank you to Mr. Miller and all of the city employees who had a part in getting the, the very large sign off of the side of Kingwood Pharmacy today. That has been, the owner of Kingwood Pharmacy has generously donated that to our history center. It's a very large, about 23 feet long, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
That little sign that says Kingwood Rexall Pharmacy. And so that, that will be, it's a piece of East Ridge history that will be preserved from this point forward. And again, very grateful for all the effort that went into that. I have several people at hand in it, so thank you very much. It's, it's going to be in storage for right now, but it will most certainly at, at one point be, be available for viewing. And, boy, America, my thought was, you know, American figures would have a field day with that thing. They would love that. But it's, again, very, very grateful for the donation, but also all the, all the folks who helped get it here. All right, that's all that I have. Mr. Miller, do you have anything?
I have nothing, sir.
Okay. Okay, so before we go into old business, I would like to move item G of new business up, as was mentioned by Buster Redd. This is to discuss and/or take action on a request of Mr. Mayor Clark for the Tennessee River Rescue for the city to provide public safety officers and collections/hauling equipment for the annual Tennessee River Rescue on October 1st. Mr. Clark, if you'll go forward, please.
Mr. Mayor, since it says to discuss slash take action, the key two words there is take action. I think all of us agree with this, so I'll make a little difference.
We have a motion and a second to approve. We made your job, please do it.
Sure did. I'm trying. I love it. Thank you.
We're going to keep you working.
Well, in all seriousness, we are very grateful for the work that you do and have done for several years now to, to help clean up our creeks here in East Ridge. And, you know, it's, there's a lot of work, a lot of time that goes into it, and we think we're very grateful.
Mayor, if it, if it worked from the city's participation, we would be able to do here as much as we're able to do. It's a great blessing to hire effort to have the city so intricately involved in the details, the planning, reaching out to volunteers, and then what we do for work. One thing I just wanted to mention is, is last year, 2015, we had 60 volunteers at Spring Creek, and we removed 70 tires from out there, and we removed 2,060 pounds of trash from Spring Creek. And so we're looking for at least that much this year, too. So with your help, approval of having us with that, we will, we'll move forward. Appreciate the council members that come out and helped with cleaning up, too. It really encouraged the citizens with the city leadership there, you know, this.
Well, thank you. Gentlemen, do we have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I apologize to you, like, I apologize to you, because life goes in hospital.
You've come, you've come many years before that, Mr. Mayor, so...
I apologize to you when they can speak out. Hopefully if you get everything turned around, I hope I can speak out this time.
I sure hope you do, and just bring your sweet wife with you. She works hard, too.
She do.
And grandson.
She can do the work, it means you can want it. So I sure appreciate it, all of you.
Thank you, sir.
If we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Greb.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stole.
Yes.
Mayor Linder.
Yes. Thank you, sir. We'll just backtrack now to old business. And item A, Resolution 2581.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, awarding annual bids for street and park materials from this year 2016 to 2017. This is table from the July 28th, 2016.
Okay. Was it? Couldn't hear you. Oh, okay. Could, could you hear him okay? Was that coming through okay? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I've just got a couple of questions here.
Yes, sir.
We see that bids were pressed on the top floor. That's fine. Bids were received for drainage pipe. It says Bradley Tank and Pipe was the lowest bidder, but did not submit the Iran divestment act certification as required by the state. Is there any reason why we can't go ahead and approve them tonight and give them to the, in the next week to submit that bid?
You, it's my belief that the city council reserves the right to, to make changes in order to bid plus this.
I mean, we can go ahead, what I'm saying, we, since it's required by the state, we can go ahead and approve it, but give them, subject to them submitting that. Can we do that?
I would say we could not approve the city authorities.
What would the actual bid or that run of the purchase be made? Long would it be before the actual challenge?
We could, we could, that could be, that could be managed.
They need to understand they don't comply with that.
Right, they're out.
Since it is a requirement by the state, so, no matter. Sounds similar enough.
Do we, do we need to make a provision in, in the motion? Basically, if they don't provide that, then we would then come back with the number bid.
The second, because the first one doesn't build the second one.
Yes.
The second one just didn't have or no response.
Right.
Whatever you prefer, you can either have a contingency or a backup plan that you adopt tonight, or you can do it again.
Yeah, I would like to go ahead and have a backup plan tonight, do that again.
Do, I believe so, it's norm.
Norm.
Norm's here.
It's norm's here.
These are street entries. You know when your first order will be?
I can take the paperwork up there in the morning and get straightened out.
Okay.
Depending on if they got a delivery on site.
Well, I hope they understand the urgency of the situation when I'm going to give this bid.
I hope they decide on that, about Cali or High Wausau.
Uh, I think High Wausau.
High Wausau.
And they've got a plant on Derby Pike. The thing, uh, okay to you? Make the work.
Yes.
The thing if you order.
Yes.
So you got work in there. Make sure it's taken, because I think that'll be all. Oh, yeah. And we've been getting from, we got a load yesterday.
Make a motion to approve pending the city receiving the Iran divestment act certification as required by the state.
I'll take it on location, too, if you may.
Wait, if that doesn't, if that doesn't come through...
If it is not received, we will go to the backup there.
Do you also want to add the, the, the question of the ball in the top floor, and the asphalt from High Wausau?
Yeah, it's already in the original, too. Yeah, it's in the original resolution.
All right.
How long are you going to give them if you want?
I can take the work again first thing in the morning and hopefully have that on the line. I've got the file of the state, so discussing it.
Within the next, it's like by next Friday, it closes business, might be.
Is that going to delay you, take, you understand? No, no, no.
So it'll be September 2nd, probably September 2nd, 5:00?
Yes.
Then it automatically goes on the second.
Yes. Include all that with my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any other questions or... Roll call.
Councilmember Greb.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes, we have taken off the table.
I think we did.
Oh, we did not, I apologize. Good case.
Yes.
Motion and second to take it off the table. Roll call, please, on removing this item from the table.
Councilmember Greb.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning. Yes.
Councilmember Stole.
Yes.
Mayor Linder.
Yes.
Now, I guess am I going to have to reiterate or restate my motion? Motion to approve Bradley Tank and Pipe pending their submission of the Iran divestment act certification as required by the state to be submitted before Fri- Friday, September the 2nd at 5:00 PM. If they do not submit their certification, the bid will be afforded to be backed up for the 2nd amendment.
I'll take it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Greb.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stole.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Item B is discussion of hours of operations in construction projects. We talked about this a little bit last night.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I seem to recall me specifically asking staff to bring forward their recommendation. I have in front of me tonight. Oh, that's referring. It was, it did not make the book. Yeah. Kenny Huston, the chief building official, and I confer on this subject, and we're suggesting the following language, 7:00 AM, 6:00 PM, weekdays and Saturdays, between the hours of 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM on Sundays, and no outside work on July 4th, Labor Day, Memorial Day, Easter Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. I want you all to realize that there is under section H, the building inspector can give special approval for certain projects past these hours. So that is, I guess, the latitude to make this, make some decisions.
I'm glad that there's some latitude there.
There is.
I think, I think it is needed, but at the same time, I do think that we need some hours, because whenever they were redoing the Arby's by my house, they were out there at 11:00 and 11:30 at night. And finally, I went over there, I mean, they were out there with the wracker packer. And finally, I went over there and I said, guys, you know, it's time to stop. So, anyway, I think that would work.
Yes, it is construction, right?
It is, yes, right.
Outside construction.
I make a motion first.
We have...
On these items.
Yeah.
Okay. Based on the, how it's worded... Based on the, how it's worded here, where it says, uh, discussion of hours of operations in construction projects. Be a stickler for.
We'd have to come back to super council day more than just work.
Okay, just, just wanted to make sure. Just getting correction.
Yes, sir.
We're good. Okay, so we have a, a motion to accept the recommendations of staff.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And we have a second. Roll call please.
We're not voting on the adoption.
No, it's a wisdom.
Right, right. This is, uh, we're basically approving these, uh, this language to be added into, uh, a, a formidable piece of legislation to be brought up next time.
Correct. Will we put this on first reading on September? I'm sorry, September eight.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We have a roll call.
House Mayor Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Okay, out of C, discussion of the record ordinance. If we're gonna have a, uh, need to do, basically take similar action to what we just did, not formally, uh, adopting ordinance or a change, but we're providing direction tonight for potentially.
Wasn't there some?
I thought we did it last time.
We did.
Well, I think there was some, there was some, uh, information uncovered by the, uh, by council that, uh, discuss the, uh, some legalities and rec- record restrictions. And so I, I will defer to either the city attorney or city manager as to what exactly that information was.
What we had, uh, provided, I think we provided, Mr. Miller, who provided to the council, uh, a United States Supreme Court opinion and two Tennessee court view. Uh, that basically say that, um, federal law pre empts state law. There is a federal law applicable to, uh, tolling and tolling restrictions. And basically, law in Tennessee is municipalities may regulate wrecker services provided the regulations are generally responsive to public safety concerns. In cases, let's say, the trial court found provisions that issue were clearly related to safety, finding that the Metro building regulates the safety of tow trucks by requiring wrecker services to obtain and maintain licenses and adequate insurance coverage when they routinely operate in metro vaults and governmental areas. So again, we need to understand if these are going to, um, I guess withstand constitutional scrutiny, that it needs to be regulated reasonably to safety concerns. Otherwise, we're, East Ridge is preempting federal law decisions. What we did was we have, uh, then provided to the council a, in fact, I think we originally did this years or so ago, but basically what we're doing is, um, providing the East Ridge adopts, uh, the state of Tennessee's tolling regulations. And that's what the council suggested. Adoption of that. What's different from the state that, that what we have? As I understand, the primary issue, uh, difference is the designated number of, um, specific tolling companies that can, uh, discipline instead.
We, we've never said anybody couldn't come out here and start a reaction. That's what I mean. The last time we had that issue, a fellow came up, come in here, but he demanded that they don't go touch it out of the back. Saying, I don't think somebody will touch it. We didn't ever tell him that he cannot come out here and go work.
We're talking two different things. We're talking about specifically what we're regulating are calls, uh, not just like if I go out and have an accident, call a company or something, I call a record. We're not regulating my ability to do that. What you're doing is, there's an accident out here and the, uh, the city, the police, for example, called the toll company. I understood what we had previously was a specific designated number of, of companies that could comply regardless, whether they comply or not. In other words, it's limited to a specific amount.
We've got three out here, and all three can be called at any time.
But this regulation, the revision, doesn't limit it to three. It's however many get permitted by the city. And that can be ten or fifteen or whatever. So we're not cutting it off with a specific number. Because it's hard, if not impossible, to determine that's regulated, that's, uh, related to safety. Because if everybody complies with the permitting process, otherwise the law is that they should all be entitled to participate on a regular rotation.
But to me, we have talked this up before many a time. And we voted last time. Got three wrecker services out here. Council voted hundred percent. I don't know what happened to the paperwork on their deal. They got grandfathered in and all that, and all that history. But I think that's all we need myself, the ones we got right now. And, uh, I like putting the motion that way, maybe, maybe like it is, go with the visual record. Or just whether it already got to right now.
Let me, let me ask a question. I want to be sure that I understood you correctly. That as, as long as we can set the requirements for the wrecker companies.
As long as they're related to public safety. You can't make something arbitrary that's not reasonably related to public safety. That's what these cases also.
I think, I think one of the things that was referring to what Larry had talked about a minute ago, I think one of the things that could most definitely be construed as related to public safety would be, you know, if there's a, a guy who suddenly wants to come in and start wrecker service in East Ridge, he immediately wants to be on the rotation, like, it's, there, there needs to be a certification process which is.
Permit, yeah.
Right, right.
That's what I was getting at.
And what exactly is required to get that certification with permit, uh, can, can dictate a lot. It could, it could, it may not have that. We could most certainly ensure that, that someone who, who maybe doesn't have a good reputation or doesn't have a reputation at all.
Absolutely.
Doesn't come in and suddenly, you know, they're on the rotation and they get to.
Such as being in business for a minimum twelve months, that could be a certification process, um.
I just, my concern is, I think you're gonna have trouble in the future if you arbitrarily say we're only, only going to allow X number of companies to be in rotation regardless.
We'll worry about that part when we get here. But, I mean, the thing about we just got three out here, they're all free on rotation. Another comes in, they start some business, he's in here a year, two years, shows his good standing, good community, has a building, has permit. The same thing with Hammonds. We had Pucky come in here, we had four or five Hammonds, so they came in, we're going rotation. We didn't really need anybody else to rotation. I mean, they're starting to death out here with this fault. So they finally got on it. And I mean, it was working fine. I mean, five days, they all work out together. I just don't think somebody can come in here, try to take some place where everybody is. My main thing, the whole thing, the whole record thing all together, was we've got a gap, we've got two people here in this community for a long time, fifty something years, okay? About one business. I don't see them getting run out by somebody come in here that's got more money than they got and run them out. Another thing is, one time there was, uh, Mr. Broome Service, what he's set up, the new standards is, he's got shut down because he had a road in between two buildings. And that's where grandfather came in. Somehow that got missed at that. I know, reflect me and Big Peter Manning here when the voting, a couple of years ago, to put somebody out of business. I don't care about it. So I got missing somebody. But there's no tape. The tape was missing of the meeting, and also, this was missing. So Claire, the meeting, Shane, the other arm, we're talking about, the end of this one here, it's Mark Rich. I said, well, we didn't go.
But that was the motion that we made last time. You go with this and add the changes. What I'm saying is, if you adopt that, then you're gonna need to explain later on, if and when that's tested, that the limitation of the number of companies on the rotation is somehow limited to public safety. That's what I'm saying. That's what these cases say. That's what the Supreme, Texas Department of State.
Well, I'd say, I don't have a problem if somebody else can just come in here, and we just need to make stipulations that they don't be in here. To you, please.
Again, that's fine, but that's part of the permitting process.
So if they do the permit, they, they're good? They come in, they do rotation? But I didn't make a motion. I didn't make the motion and then, uh, Mr. Mayor, can I get you an hour and a half? Go with the grid on.
This is discussion.
You may.
Making the motion, go with the ordinance, which Cagle just held up, the usual old ordinance we have. That's the motion I made. Keep the wrecker service we got, like it is right now. Over. There's a party making right now. And, uh, like the lawyer said, later on, we may have fun, uh, later on. Have fun, and all we got, city manager, attorney, and mayor to scratch them out. I make a motion.
And you'll be all council plans today, right?
Well, you will be.
Mr. Grant, do you have a favor?
Yeah, I got, I just, but I just do.
Right, that's what I'm saying. They've been in, uh, bidding in there for years and years. So if they must decide to, uh, or after history, are we gonna stick to three?
Like been in good state? And, you know, like been in this community all the time, they will get on like a.
Well, but that's where the rug comes in with the previous, previous ordinance, because previous ordinance does limit the number. So.
But Mr. Grant, the law was on this, oh, I can't handle this because he has a job, and I've got a fight. I like the word. I still, I did four motions.
Are we use the, the ordinance that was Mark's original last time?
Yes.
With vision to put in against that.
Yeah, with, although vision, put in, we said, we're going to end like.
Can I make a recommendation? Can we just see this ordinance with the recommendations in print before we go to make an emotion and vote on it?
Well, we're supposed to say it this time. Why? We did that the last.
Well, we, we, we asked for.
That's what I told discussion.
Yeah, we, we asked for that, to use that ordinance marked original as a basis for what we're going to. With, with changes, um.
We have two changes, only.
Uh, I'm, I'm just gonna take a couple of seconds and review over the changes with you. On page two sixteen, Public Safety Director's change to Police Chief. On page three of sixteen at the top, where it says four classes, that should read three classes. On page six of sixteen. I'm sorry.
Page five of sixteen.
Yes.
High as well, the capacity thirty-five tonne should be lower to twenty-five tonne.
Yes.
Oh, I missed that one. Sorry, thank you. Okay, twenty-five. Thank you. You may have another one or two to add in there, but let's add them.
Check them.
Okay, checking the, uh, page six of sixteen, under section nine, five oh five, Public Safety Director to Police Chief. We have a couple of them on seven, page seven of sixteen, section nine dash five oh six, versus city treasurer, that should be finance officer.
Okay, wait a minute. See, that's what I'm talking about. Mine did not reflect the changes.
I, I gave it out tonight as a separate.
Oh.
Another separate.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I should have questioned that person.
Is it attached to his, oh, is it, is it attached to the work session?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's.
That's what I thought we were gonna have a discussion aligned with me.
Right.
So I was hoping to bring that up.
I was, I was with you there, Mark. I was looking at the book and I was thinking about that in a second.
You want me to start over? Okay. Page two sixteen, under wrecker inspector, nonono page, Public Safety Director, change to the Police Chief. Page three of sixteen at the top, where it says four classes, that should read three classes. At page five of sixteen, under wrecker, in the middle of the page, blue capacity should be twenty-five tonne versus thirty-five tonne. Section six of sixteen, under nine dash five oh five, city manager, under two, should be public police chief instead of public safety director. Page seven of sixteen, section nine dash five oh six, about two thirds down, city treasurer should be finance officer. Section nine dash five oh seven, investigation of town, under read that, middle sentence, the wrecker inspector shall report his findings to the police chief. And the police chief shall, wrecker, make such further investigation as is deemed necessary. Last sentence on that page, city treasurer should be changed to finance officer. And section nine dash five oh nine, uh, where it says seven, the public safety director, that should be changed to police chief. Page nine of sixteen. No, that, take that out. That was just some notes. Those are just my, my notes. I took that out. They're required to do that anyway. Section nine dash five thirteen, Public Safety Director should be Police Chief. And keep going back until we get to page fourteen of sixteen, twenty, where it says chauffeur's license should read C D L license. And that's all I had, what Councilman Cagle has, other than I missed.
What about the rest of section nineteen, where it says left out?
No, that left out was all notes. This, this is the only original one I had. So I didn't have a copy of ordinance or a version of ordinance number seven eighty-seven.
Because that section nineteen deals with what, uh, Councilman Stewart was talking about.
Exactly.
Two separate parts.
What I'm, yes, and then what, that, all that language in nineteen is the same as in the other version of ordinance number seven eighty-seven. The difference between the first, the first, uh, version and the second version, or the original one you have, is that last sentence that says district wrecker permit shall issued prior to September first. That's not in the other version. It's in the original version, but not the other. Exactly. Exactly. This is the original.
All right, can I make a motion now?
He's pretty good.
I wanna change these.
Back to back.
I make a motion, I'll go. I make a motion, you know, keep that, we have not forgotten.
Well, now, this is just discussion. Do you would like the motion that this is, go for the next meeting, this is what we're reporting?
Yes, sir.
You went, did he eight? I'm sorry, September eight.
Yes. Yes, no motion, yes.
But just for clarification.
Since we invited the two riprock partners out here, I'd like to get their opinion on what they think about the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, that's, that's, we did invite them here, so we should, we should get their, get their feelings on an input.
And, uh, of course, I'm sure they have the advantage of having seen both versions like we have.
Of what, you know, what it all is, but I would like to look at it.
Okay. Okay.
If you grab it, say, you know, have it in, not even, would you look at it?
Yeah, this was the same as, it was in the agenda packet, released though.
Did you get a copy, did you want me to get a copy of it?
That was the same.
Would that other stuff added in?
Yeah, lines the changes that we made tonight, but I don't think the changes we made tonight would even touch any of your operational, it's just basically name changes, change the chauffeur's to C D L, Public Safety Director, Police Chief, that's the thing.
Hey, one other thing, too, Larry, last time, I made the, the comment that we need to be able to raise them to what the state, if they're a pay, is lower, you become a devil, if you're feet. I would say these are, are a lot lower than what states are.
Would that, uh, mesh up? How to say, yeah, target? Or your states?
If you need to.
Sometimes you do, sometimes you don't.
The court really want to tell you.
Basically, under the, uh, section nine dash fourteen, section nine dash five oh four, building charge of district records, number four, says the maximum charge of district record calls shall be the same as the state of Tennessee Department of Safety. Changes have to say, maybe a bit from time to time. That's the ones there now. And that, that's what you've already.
Know what they just said, or sometimes they have to talk a little more, catch court what they're telling them.
Mr. Miller, are you gonna paint and plug in the different numbers, pages ten, is that it?
No, I guess what's gonna, this whole thing, this could be redraft, redone, because this is the only thing I have that's even close to the original.
Well, that's the template, obviously, of what you used with the changes that you made. What I understand from talking about is changing the amounts on pages ten and eleven. And I understand, gonna make it consistent with the state, so, so I.
Ten and eleven, it says under right now, under ten, says the maximum charge of district record calls shall be the same as the state of Tennessee Department of Safety charges.
Well, but we need to, you need to reference the current T dot rates, or as follows, but they're not in the package. I assume they've gone up since two thousand and seven.
It's only for, what?
Event, so that we don't have to reference the rates. Point. So we can take out the rates for A class, B class, and E class, just leave that as set by state.
How many, how many of the state of Tennessee is it, sir?
Well, it seems like all that subset of four should say is the maximum charge for district record calls shall be the same as the state of Tennessee proper safety charges, same that came in from time to time here.
That's right.
And the rest of it's that.
Right. Right.
Yeah, well, but can we, can we get this written up, wait, those will next time, and let them, you call the other, go ahead.
Well, stop lying, tomorrow, I'll give you a statement through you, and you can see all the changes.
All right, let you know, go for it.
Make sure they get a copy for you.
If we can, prior to the next meeting, can we, uh, can we try to have, uh, send out emails, some kind of confirmation that lets council know that our record operators have had a chance to, to see this, uh, and, and that, basically, I don't wanna kind of go through the same process again next time with you. So, you know, if we can, if we can.
Yeah, I will have that, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll have a copy of this tomorrow from Mr. Broome, and anyone else in the Tony business wants to have one?
If we can, if we can.
If we can, okay, I'm sorry, uh, and then they can look at this and get back to me early next week, what your feelings are. I could, Mr., can I ask you?
Well, we not make the motion, go ahead, I cannot, I hope, we're getting, we're getting changed, if it all, straight down to that.
Even, even if, even if we had the chance to vote on, uh, the first reading, so we could still have to get back and vote next time on second reading, since we're many ordinance.
Can we like, next?
We, we can't. Yeah, so.
It's not before you an ordinance form, with the changes in it.
Okay, I'll, I'll motion it to, uh, City Manager, can, and how do you get together to just change?
But it should, the, the topic should make any difference, aren't you simply operating under what's currently existing anyway?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Okay, now, the one thing I do, I do see as an issue that we will have to, to resolve at some point for second reading is, is what we're going to do about the, the number of records on the rotation. Because I, and I know there was a member of the Trenton family who was here just a few minutes ago, uh, and, you know, if, if they were to come forward, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying, no. Good, so, yeah, well, right, and that's, that's the thing, currently, limits, yeah, and currently, it's limited to three, so if, if Trenton did come tomorrow.
But he's also gonna have, he's gonna have the records, so he's gonna roll back.
Well, true, true.
But he'd be that sort of, we, hard things, he can only do.
So.
On rotation, we gotta have all, well, we'll do my check, and I'll finish that.
They, they, it's kind of striking the balance between preserving these guys, uh, their ability to continue doing business, because they have been a part of East Ridge for so long, you know, and served the community well, but also, you know, other, other people who, who also have served the community well, who may want to eventually come in, uh, continue to come on the rotation, because we, we will have to grapple with that.
One thing, if, if it's so bad, I'd like for you to put it in, uh, to, uh, your mouth, to put in, uh, um, get, put it in, follow it in.
Well, and I think by using, again, this, yeah, this, this ordinance, seven eighty-seven, that's marked original, has, has that language in it.
Yeah, well, that's not a good.
Section. Now, this one, right. Yeah, there was, there were, like I said, there were two versions of seven eighty-seven, one had it, and one didn't. Both of them, and both of them were approved, and then, which one was the governing one? Is which one was, which one is the question of the lottery? Yep, we did.
I could beat that one, then. You know, they gave us, you're right, we probably tortured that one enough, but, you know, they gave us to get it right, and make sure we're, we're moving forward properly. All right, now, in our new business, item A, ordinance number ten sixteen, here's, of course, on first reading. Ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, replacing ordinance number eight sixty-seven, and amending Title twenty relative to the timing and placement of political signs on city and private property in the city of East Ridge, here on first reading. Counsel, let, let me, uh, mention, I made some discussion last time about tent lotteries, and I didn't understand whether that was as correct, or that did not, frankly, didn't understand the term, exactly, who's gonna draw the lottery, when they're gonna draw it, uh, site's gonna be designated, or if you're the number one pick, it gives you, pick to the side. I, I just need some guidance, this is here on first reading, and now, see, we'll, again, it's.
So we'll, I'll put that in this, this ordinance here.
We'll put it in, so it comes up on second reading.
I think we should have a lottery, uh, forty-eight hours prior to, uh, to election, the formal election day.
Well, we need to be more specific than that, it's forty-eight hours before the first time you can spell, which is typically eight o'clock.
Yeah, earlier, though.
And I think we need to set a specific time, uh.
Thursday at nine o'clock.
That needs to be, like, two days before the election day, this Thursday, this year.
The key, the key to this is, right now, the language is twenty-four hours prior, that's their past practice, and he is, would have a lottery, right?
Right, I would say.
It's gonna be Friday, Thursday, or Friday, week prior, so everybody knows.
I would say seven, I would say seven days prior. Because if you do seven days prior, regardless of whether, you know, the county elections in August are, and the, the primary elections are gonna be Thursday elections, and then Tuesday, and then, so regardless of whether it's a Tuesday or Thursday, seven days ahead of time, it's gonna be a Tuesday or a Thursday, so it's gonna fall on Sunday or something like that, when you're gonna have your lottery. What time specifically is that days prior?
Six o'clock, morning, they'll get out there.
I bet you the lottery, yeah, but I, I would say. So they've got it down. And who's going to specifically draw?
City Mayor.
City Mayor. I'm a good answer, guys. So, we pull the city, you have the city court, then the city recorder.
My city recorder. You're gonna have the judge doing that stuff.
What is it, what is she going to be drawing, she going to be drawing, like, number one, I get to pick my side, or, or she gonna draw my side?
Number one is spot one, they'll have our, it goes, they'll be square, right, number one is side one, number two is side two, number three is side three, so what's all about that?
Best case, you know, the sites?
Yeah, rock side.
How many?
I don't know, we had much like that.
We've got seven running for City Council, we've got two running.
It's like, right, ten, you probably put ten out there, and then you got.
We've got two running for State Senate, so it always, next eight, nine, I would kick it up to twelve.
Do you have any regard under the candidacy, or?
Uh, there's no county on this, right?
And the size of the science is hard, twelve, twelve.
And I'm wondering, does this need to be part of the actual ordinance? Can we just say, it's, can we just say, you know, replacement of, of tents on election day will be done by lottery, then we can create the rules for lottery separately?
Okay, we just do not, we'll, we'll get our first piece of spots.
And someone could need it to sit here, but they go through all of this.
They don't find anyone, you know.
What's the plan?
I just, I'm making, I just thought, I'm breaking, I don't know, whatever, now.
Don't like a bad thing, oh, well, okay, I think, yeah, we're good, there, there.
Uh, and then the problem with that is, determines what time they get it there. It's twenty-four hours ahead of time, three, six?
Yeah, twenty-four hours.
We go with this, it's twenty-four hours.
Yeah, but half the people don't follow it, yeah, that's the issue.
It's like everything else, it depends on enforcement, you know, enforcement. But then again, that puts, you know, who's going to enforce it?
That was, if it's a bad man right there, in a bad position, one out there, and telling his future boss, hey, you gotta get your tent off the property right now, and is he really want to do that?
Yeah, he would, I can tell.
Not gonna be the city manager, it's gonna be the police chief, that's the one. Sorry, chief, you've got.
Well, thank you, the lottery, how about the, uh, this is primary election, you're gonna vote the lottery for the primaries, too, you don't have to clear it in, I need to hand over here to the county, to hand out, and go in, register, get our city ordinance, hold your, about any five sites.
Also, we have a date, it's taken.
That's, that's why I wanted to incorporate it in with this sign, so that they can, they'll get, they'll have, each candidate will have.
How about, how about we do this? How about, this is first reading, how about we simply insert the language that the tent site selection will be done by lottery? We create the rules for the lottery between now and second reading, and have those rules distributed to the council ahead of the, ahead of the next meeting, which would be second reading, and, and we can, can look at it and have opportunity to say, well, I kinda like that, I don't like that, prior to second reading, so we're not here doing the same thing to each other.
Sounds good, motion to approve.
Okay, we have motion to approve, is that with the language including the lottery?
And only language is tent sites are being determined.
Yes, until we come up, until we come to the second reading, from now on, then.
Oh, motion done.
Oh, I was just saying, that.
Okay. We have a, a motion, we get second, no, we did have second. We have the roll call, please.
Ms. Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Cabelo.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
No.
Councilmember Soul.
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. Okay, item B, resolution twenty-five eighty-four, is there a resolution, I'm sorry, the resolution of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to appoint current members of East Ridge Housing Commission. Mayors indicated last time, we felt like perhaps was necessary, so there would be no question exactly who was appointed for exposition to have their term, which is right, it's gonna be a close resolution.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion in second to approve?
They're, they are, they're making a pretty, I'll wait. They were actually stacking, you know.
Yeah, included library.
Now, this is just, it has a couch and houses.
Okay, well, you're gonna ask that question, well, all right, library, first, having mine, but I've got another person, but.
Uh, we would probably do that next time, we'll put it on the agenda, we'll do that next time, the library.
I want to, I want to, I said, I'm, she said that, I'm, I'm. About the library, for.
Okay, so we have a motion in the second to approve, resolution twenty-five eighty-four. Roll call, please.
Ms. Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Cabelo.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Soul.
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. Item C, resolution twenty-five eighty-five.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing application for acceptance of Maddy's Fund Innovation Grants.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve, roll call, please.
Ms. Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Cabelo.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Soul.
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. Item D, resolution twenty-five eighty-six.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager or his designated to purchase five Dodge police vehicles with Tennessee property rental services statewide contractors, or some Tennessee code annotated, section twelve dash three dash one hundred.
Motion to approve.
Mary, my name.
Yes, sir, if, if you'll, just, just one more.
I'll take my question back for a second.
Okay.
This is, was, this is, this is, thank you. We have five, we have five, uh. We have five, we have five, uh, five vehicles budgeted at a total of one hundred sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars. And these cost thirty thousand three sixty-three ninety, amount to, that was a forty-four percent discount.
And, and the next item, the video system, is that budgeted as well, or is that?
Half of that coming from the reserves, savings made from the one fifty-one, eight six oh four, or eight oh four, five vehicles. The, uh, difference in the budget, ten thousand, then we would add, uh, the difference of those dollars coming from the drug.
Okay, thank you.
What does that car cost?
Cars are costing each, uh, thirty thousand three hundred sixty dollars and thirty-nine cents. Added, they, they would get out, give me that hundred fifty-eight, one twenty-seven, I will bring four percent discount, that lowers it to one fifty-one, eight oh four.
Yeah, like a motion, can I make a motion?
Can I make a motion, please?
Second.
Motion to approve in the second. Roll call, please.
That's Mayor Garett.
Yes.
Councilmember Kayle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Sewell.
Yes.
Mayor Lake.
Yes.
Could I, I'll go as, uh, I know it's the law, the law, it's now, the police departments are going to, uh, western, small parts. Is that gonna be over what the reason is that?
What department?
We got to.
Yeah, I know, guys.
I'll buy a bus, if it give a four room, or?
What, I'm not, I'm not aware of the four trucks, that are, uh, police packages.
What's in your departments, such as Allen County, Chattanooga, I'm going to the smaller SUVs, sort of like the state, I was told. Uh, are running the Dodges, uh, are basically, the batteries are running for equal to, uh, their terrain, some, some of the places in Chattanooga, you know, they're, they're in the mountainous areas that they have to go up, where we're just at the bridge. So, they're, they're a little bit more than what we're planning for the Dodgers. And they're all wheel drive as well, so that's very good, as you go into the SUVs, they get into areas that's regional, I'm sure.
Are you saying five?
I, 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 the SUVs, yes, for, on, we're going to the, uh, SUV, uh, Ford Explorers. And with four-wheel drive, because in some areas, we, we have them in Kansas, because of the snow, these vehicles that you have, we have here, just don't go anywhere. We've got sixes, sixes, more snow, SUVs can, so.
We generally follow back to our, especially the utility vehicles that we keep around, such as the old Jeeps. Uh, we would have some of the older, front-wheel drive cars, uh, stuff of that nature.
When you say stop?
Uh, so far, yeah, we've, we've been pretty happy with the Dodgers. And you still remember, they're all under warranty, so anything that comes up, we'll go back to the dealer and it's, uh, been pretty good so far for us.
How about root?
Root, inside.
Root, um, also seem to block them, I may see a little top, there's more components we put in, but so far it's been good for them.
Good. And chief, I don't know, you may want to hang around and just, I think the next item deals with the police department as well. It's like item B, resolution twenty-five eighty-seven.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Eastbridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager or his designated to purchase five video systems with the police department through the Tennessee Department of General Services statewide contract list, according to Tennessee Code annotated section twelve dash three dash one hundred.
Motion to approve? Second. We have a second.
Second.
You have a second.
We got one. Okay. Any comments or questions? Okay, roll call, please.
That's Mayor Garett.
Yes.
Councilmember Kayle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Sewell.
Yes.
Mayor Lake.
Yes. Item B, resolution twenty-five eighty-eight.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Eastbridge, Tennessee, approving a bid for new carpet for the indoor soccer court, Kent Jordan Park.
Oh, excuse me, hang on, please, we've got a.
Issue.
Yes, issue with this, I'm gonna have to.
We're gonna call him, Martin.
We're gonna call him audible, please. After meeting with the folks today, a suspicion that I had yesterday is there was something that was making the prices a little differently. It comes down to linear density, which in our business and in Janet's business and all of us putting this together, we missed the linear density because we used one of those specs, which was the spec from one of the companies. But each company's got, when you really start getting down to it, like on turf, they've got something a little bit different in there. The short story to that is this, we can get carpet at the price it was bid to us. We can get carpet at what we need, and what we wanted, and what we were trying to bid on. And we can get carpet in orange, when they get white. This is the actual carpet here. If you look at this carpet, you don't want your son following on it, or your daughter. Because there's no softness to it at all. The carpet we've got, we've had fourteen years. The low bid that we got on this was from the carpet company that we bought that from before. We're gonna have to rebid this. What I'm saying to you is, even after rebidding it, I don't want to discuss any prices tonight, but we will be able to meet our budget. And I was also assured today that we would be able to get it put in in the time that we need to get it put in. And I was also assured today that our carpet, that they were taking our carpet as a trade-in, which is part of the deal. To the point where that the company that you're selling to in Massachusetts called us to check up on them, to see if there was a deal yet later on. And Kim and I were smart enough to catch up to it and kind of take it in a different direction. So anyway, we need to rebid carpet to these specifications here, which will be this carpet here, which has a thick pad on it for what we need down there. And that's, but we can't, we can't okay this tonight.
Uh, you can't get it, Martin?
Yes, yes, I'm, this, this is just, this is the kind it is. Yes. I can get it in this color orange.
No, I'm talking, just saying, uh, like you said, you didn't want the kids following that, I'm talking about that.
Yeah, yes, 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 we can get this carpet in this orange. Or, if y'all decide to, we can change from black thatch to white thatch, and your orange will come out the same color to Tennessee Bucks. I, I will not recommend that, but if y'all wanna do it, it's fine.
How about if we go with the cheapest, I don't care if it's green, blue, or orange?
Uh, well, when it, when it comes in, that's fine, there's about two thousand dollar difference. But, you know, I mean, there's no sense voting on that tonight, is it?
No.
Does General make a trouble problems?
Well, it depends on they get the little bid or not.
Has any, didn't one of these companies, Martin, did any of these companies that bid?
Yeah, the one that bid, the one that bid twice as much as everybody else on this, is, is in a chapter thirteen or eleven, yes. They're, they're way out of picture. They're not even in the picture.
They're substantially higher than the little bid.
They're twice as high as a lot of the four week, gee. That's who's, that's who's in, that's who's.
They're down twice as high as everybody else.
Nation of hacks, right?
One and a half.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We're not, okay, so how quickly, how quickly does this need to be rebid in order to?
As soon as possible. Obviously, we've got the right specs now.
Okay, do, do we need to formally ask for a rebidding process?
Reject, reject all bids and then authorize after rebidding.
We have a motion to that effect.
My motion, reject all bids.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to reject the bids and have a, uh, rebidding. Roll call, please.
That's Mayor Garett.
Yes.
Councilmember Kayle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Sewell.
Yes.
Mayor Lake.
Thank you, chief.
Yes.
I'm just gonna stay up here.
I am. Okay, we done with item G earlier, now we move to item H, discuss and we'll take action on the fence in Kent Jordan Park.
I'm excited about this because, uh, I'm what you give the boss full credit here, because I never envisioned it this way. That's why we got him to sit in there. Uh, we went up in with a black six-foot-high fence, all the way across for seven thou, seven thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars.
Uh, I say seven thousand two hundred and eighty-three.
I, I understand that, and we called it back out there today, and he has to put bigger posts up, so it's, uh, two hundred something more dollars.
All right.
For that, that's right. Seven thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars. He missed out, again, I was second, checking, making sure everything's right, so we won't look back on something and see if we've got something we're not supposed to. And he said, I do need to put the bigger poles up, which the other company had already figured out.
That is not a turn of our bargain.
We got to put the. No, it's just, it's just a six-foot-high blank. That's what, that's what y'all had asked to do, yes. Well, we'll have to, yeah, we'll have to install a paper hose, yes, I know.
I have a question. I mean. There are city employees, number one, have the equipment to put up three hundred and eighty feet of fence.
I, I, I asked them, I asked them and they said they could do it.
Number two, would it not serve better purpose letting them work on other jobs in the city? I don't know how much the labor would cost to install three hundred and eighty feet of fence, is what I'm getting at.
It's actually.
But how, how long did it take them to put the fence up, the other fence up?
Took them a long time, and then we had to pay a fence company, come back in and stretch it, fix it.
And that's what I'm talking about. Did we have the equipment to do it? He's shaking his head no.
Not free.
I've asked the staff, they said they could handle it now, if you can, and you can.
Well, they did everything to stretch it and, and some of the little corners and things, and then I hired somebody, paid them eight hundred dollars to come in and, and finish it, fix it.
Could be ran a stretcher.
Oh, yeah, stretchers are, are, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, every, do you know how to use one?
Yeah, I don't know how to use one, and, uh...
How about you, man?
Sent me up to a bag stretcher one time in the food business, I couldn't find it.
I mean, our guys are not professional fences, so that's, they can be doing other jobs.
Well, I, I, I understand what you're saying, I've had other cities that they were able to, you're very competent in doing and, and save money.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking, I'm just asking, I'm just asking a question. Do we need to check with them to see if they?
Yeah, I, I sure don't wanna run them down. Those guys take care of these, I said at the meeting the other day, everybody helps us out in the park, and I will definitely not say nothing against them on anything. I'll stand by them on anything they do.
Like we'll, we'll run the fields that they got built up?
Which ones?
Beans, round fields, woodworks?
No, our guys did that one. My crew did that one. My crew doesn't have time to do this. There's no way.
You want to say this is the next meeting, which I'm on?
This, this is not the main.
No, it hasn't, I was, maybe it's the next meeting.
Now, I think we're in the T D, they work, have you put some fence up right now, or is it Russia? And it's, it's a legitimate question.
Motion to table. We have a motion to table, we have a second.
I'll get with Norman and them in the morning, just talk to them, get their, you know, mind, we'll get them on. Okay, that's cool. Thank you, sir. Do you want me to take the beat?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion in the second to table, and roll call, please.
That's Mayor Garett.
Yes.
Councilmember Kayle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Sewell.
Yes.
Mayor Lake.
Yes. Item, uh, discuss, take action on a request from Nick Cook with Eastbridge News Online, hold candidates forum at the city council chambers, date to be determined.
Mr. Cook, do you want to address?
Hold by the way, happy birthday. Thank you very much. Um, I've drafted a letter to, an email to Mr. Miller, it's pretty self-explanatory. I'm sure y'all all have an opportunity to read it. The readers of Eastbridge News Online have expressed some dismay that no civic group has stepped forward to, uh, promote a candidates forum for this election. And, uh, I just thought we could fill a void. I'm kind of in the planning stages. I thought, what more, better place to have a forum than the city council chambers? So, one of the things that makes this so good is the seats are very comfortable. Public address system is more than adequate. In past forums, the public address system has been faulty, I think everybody here knows that. Problems they've had are some of that stuff. So, um, whenever the room is available, I'd like to hold it before early voting begins, which is October nineteenth. And I'd like for the city to accommodate when they request.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this sits seventy-two people. If you have, well, so we have two thousand people, I'm just real estate.
Who will address, eight, eight thousand? According to.
I'm with you, Nick, for the discretion, sorry.
According to the fire marshal, this room seats a hundred and forty-three people. And he said it could accommodate a few more. Uh, I intend to video the forum and post it on Eastbridge News Online for all those citizens who can't make it. And it can stay up until election.
One more question, and I'll, I'll speak. Can we not, uh, set it up at our P M O here, please, you know?
I can do anything the council wants, I'm just requesting the council to give us permission to hold it here.
Well, I'm gonna probably help you if I'm saying, could we have, could you not hold it in the P M O, or be, not even have overflow, pick?
I'm requesting that we have it here.
I know you're questioning it, but I'm asking, could you not have it?
We could have it any number of places, council.
Well, we've always had it in the school, and no problem.
I pointed out the problems associated with the school, you haven't had to sit at the chair, uh, in a hardback chair, this is just more comfortable. But it's, I'll respect the will of the council if you don't want to hear about time.
My motion is right.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve, now we can, there are any, any questions?
Yes, sir.
He says he's gonna be, uh, like on online news. That will be the only place that you will be using it, is on online news. And will not be selling advertisers off of it, or, or if, uh, say, Jim Athune wants to come in, have you cut his version out and then run an ad on online news and adjust it to him? I have no plans to do any such thing. This is not a money-making venture. Martha Feese said it is, where you all left the motion for him to use it or not, that's all, we're gonna set a big board.
I would, yeah, I would. I actually attended, I don't know if you all remember it, but, like, maybe six years ago, uh, the school board race at that time. David Testerman was running, Andy Mullins, there was another candidate, they had a forum in here. It was.
So there was a press.
There is. And I thought that went really well. It was, it was well-attended, but it was comfortable, everyone could hear.
Well, my question, all it was, was, if we overflow in here, what would I, I'll, the fire marshal, when he asks, go out, go out. when he asks, let's go out, let's go out. Doesn't get me.
Well, we could, we could certainly ask for, uh, our marshal's input on that when it happens, uh, I mean, worst case scenario, you try to think of what, and, I mean, it's not something you want to do, but if you have to. Any other, no questions?
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
That's Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Kayle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Just saying.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mayor Lake.
Yes. Item J, uh, discuss, take action on purchasing sixteen new tizers from the police department.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion in the second to approve.
Will there be a budget items?
They're coming out of the drug fund.
How much is already coming out?
Uh, I think we have about forty thousand in here now, forty, forty, forty-eight, forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Yeah, drug charges is, uh, twenty-one, and we spent, uh.
It's thirty-six, six forty-eight.
Thirty-six, thirty, thank you.
According to, obviously, eleven was the case, we gave it to twenty-eight thousand.
We went through a, a coding audit and found twenty thousand, which was coded off, and had to go back into the drug fund.
What we.
It was something that we're gonna have to do a budget, uh.
Yes, sir, that's gonna be part of the budget.
That's part of the budget amendments we have to do.
Yeah, if we're gonna spend that much, we budgeted twenty-eight thousand for expenditures, and this will make us go over, so we'll have to budget for the difference.
Why, as we guessed, it would, like, immediately, and say, uh, no, we had, we had to give it, not for this, we had.
Well, we have, if you add the forty, twenty thousand that needed to go, and should have been in here in the first place, because it was, it was forty.
Okay, we have roll call, please.
That's Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Kayle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mayor Lake.
Yes. Hey, folks, everyone has good evening.